I want to introduce the spirit of flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united out, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Gilson.
Here.
Pelosi.
Present.
Cut.
Here.
Milshewski.
Here.
Muddens.
Here.
Funkhauser.
Here.
Spears.
Present.
Teale.
Here.
Thorne.
Okay, do we have any amendments to tonight's agenda? All right, no amendments. We do have a presentation tonight with a couple of commendations for Detective Stacy Mott and Officer Jeffrey Johnson. Officers, would you like to come forward?
First off, I got Officer Johnson. The citation reads, "For actions that went above and beyond call of duty on July 5th, 2011, Officer Johnson was on routine patrol when he observed suspicious activities occurring within the vehicle. When he approached the vehicle, the individuals inside stated they were two adults. Using his investigative skills, Officer Johnson determined that one of the individuals was in fact juvenile and a victim of criminal sexual abuse. Officer Johnson contacted detectives and further investigated the crime based on judicial investigation. The suspect was charged with four counts of predatory criminal sexual assault of a child, a class X felony, and five counts of aggravated criminal sexual abuse, a class two felony." Detective Stacy Mott, "For actions that went above and beyond call of duty on July 5th, 2011, Detective Mott was informed of a sensitive investigation that involved a juvenile victim. Detective Mott responded to the call and investigated the situation with fear and due diligence. This included work nonstop until cert forms were obtained through the State's Attorney's Office, the warrants were executed in return, and a victim's sensitive interview was conducted so charges could be presented for the case, some of which were prior incidents and other than one currently being investigated. Based on her efforts, the suspect was charged with four counts of predatory criminal sexual assault of a child, a class X felony, and five counts of aggravated criminal sexual abuse, a class two felony." I don't want to go into detail about the case or the driving reasons, but I can tell you that these two spent a lot of hours of our sleep. And I can say that these types of cases are never easy to handle. They both did a critical loss of judgment.
Okay, next we will go into public hearing for Raging Waves amended annexation agreement. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to comment on Raging Waves amended annexation agreement? Step up please, sir. State your name for the record and sign in, please.
Hi, I'm Mark Johnson, Yorkville. On May 11th, 2010, a public hearing was held on Crestview Builders' request to change the annexation agreement pertaining to Blackberry Woods subdivision. I spoke on many things that night, but one was the policy of our city to hold public hearings and vote on those hearings on the same night. The vote was held off that evening based on questions raised and my persistence to change this policy. The then-mayor Burr commented that this was a good idea and asked that it be sent to committee. Well, here we are again 14 months later, and we don't have this common sense policy in place yet. As is the case in Washington DC today, with the fight over the debt ceiling, sometimes we as individuals must put our principles aside and do what is best for all. This public hearing tonight is one of those moments. I will personally set aside one of my firm beliefs for the betterment of our city for the long term. But, I ask this council to please get a policy to not allow a vote on the same night as public hearings in place as soon as possible. That is only fair to all of your constituents. Tonight is one of those exceptions. Raging Waves is probably one of the most positive things that has happened to our city in my 61 years in it. Not only has it brought in needed revenues, but it has attracted people from all parts of the country to our city. This is the kind of development our city needs. Our residents get discounted use while bringing in busloads of people and revenue from all around the area. My children, their spouses, and my 12 grandchildren have all enjoyed this venue. This was positioned north of our city, which has helped with all kinds of traffic concerns. This company helped put in roadways and traffic signals at great expense, with our city helping them offset the costs over 10 to 20 years. The previous mayor and her council voted to not only get a 5% tax from this venue, but then added another 3% on top. Taxes don't solve problems of our city, our state, or our country. We are all taxed enough already. It appears that this public hearing will remove this added tax by the previous mayor to allow Raging Waves to market their wonderful venue for the balance of this season. I support that. I think that voting for this change tonight will do wonders for showing the world that Yorkville gets it when it comes to business. The previous mayor's philosophy of taxing so government can spend more isn't the answer. Yorkville should be open for business and make businesses welcome. That isn't saying I agree of giving away the ship up front to attract business. I don't. On the contrary, let everyone be on an equal playing field. This added tax was wrong to put on this venue and must be corrected. Five bullets I believe in. I believe Raging Waves is a fantastic business for our city. I see no person or landowner affected by your voting tonight, and that's why I've gone against my principle of saying that we need to have a separate night vote. I believe the added tax was a mistake to institute and must be rescinded. I believe other businesses will view our city being pro-business with this vote. I see no downside to having the vote tonight. My family and most of Yorkville love Raging Waves for the entertainment value. I also love it for the revenue it generates to improve our city. I can't see anything wrong with voting this poorly designed added tax out tonight and to help a wonderful positive business have a chance at success, which will only make our city stronger in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Any other public comment on Raging Waves? Okay, with that, we will pause public hearing, and we'll discuss it when it comes up under commander's accord, if that's okay with everybody. Now, to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments out there? Sir, please state your name for the record and sign in.
Yes, Your Honor.
Your Honor, I would like to address the issue regarding the mandatory sprinkler system that has been brought up before the Yorkville City Council. I would like to begin with a little background. Years ago, whether you remember or not, in the days before 911, we used to get a sticker with the phone book that was delivered to us. The sticker was for our phone and had two phone numbers on it. The two phone numbers were the fire department and the police. The Illinois Fire Marshal's report states that there were 58,234 fires reported in 2009 in the state of Illinois. Your Honor, I will ask that the council please be patient with me as I proceed. This is no doubt a serious number. It is not a laughable matter, nor is it a political number, nor is it a political number. In that number, I am sure there were deaths of innocent men, women, and worst of all, children not included in the millions of dollars to property. But I must however, call your attention to another statistic. The crime rate in Illinois, for the very same year, 64,000 acts of violence, property incidents 353,000, murders 773, forced rape 3,900, robberies 23,000, assault 36,000, burglaries 77,000, varsity 248,000, vehicle theft 26,676, totaling 835,064 incidents of crime. Neither number is a laughing matter, whether it's the 58,000 fires versus the 835,000 criminal acts. One of the elements that I saw on the film on July 12th was the delay between damage done to the inner fire and the damage done to the home without, with a sprinkler system. The film attempts to send a message that a preventative measure, the sprinkler system, minimizes the damages between the call and the fire department arriving. Why then is the state making... If the state is pushing this mandate, why does it make it so difficult for citizens to own a firearm, even though the Second Amendment entitles every citizen to bear arms? It does not give the right to any form of government to force sprinklers on their property. In fact, there is nothing within the Constitution that states such a thing. You may find this offensive and abhorring, but it was in the film, and it was used as an emotional element portraying just what a child's life is worth in a fire. I believe that this was a marketing ploy to attack the conscience and shame that should anyone object to having a sprinkler system installed. I mustn't say that turnabout is fair play. Using the firearms, what kind of parents leave their daughter at home alone without a means to defend herself from intruders? Just what is their daughter's dignity, and what is it worth if she is raped? What kind of parents leave their children home with a babysitter with no means to protect their children? What kind of a man allows his wife to go out with her friends, making you a target for rapists or thieves without any type of protection? What kind of council would deny senior citizens a means to defend themselves? I ask you to look at this week's paper. Were there more fires, or were there more acts of crimes? Which then should our priorities be? Your Honor, assuming that you would go back to stating what I've just stated is factual, and that you would support it, assume then that in Thursday's paper, you would find that I had applied for a business license to open up a gun shop in downtown Yorkville, Illinois. I think you would become suspicious. The current state of the economy is still in question. As you know, gasoline prices have shot up on the national level from $1.73 a gallon to $3.89 a gallon, with a cost increase being passed from raw materials to the suppliers, to the processing plants, to the stores, and finally to the customer. The result, many are deceived that the gross national product has grown, failing to recognize that the inflation is only due to higher energy prices. In the housing markets, things don't fare any better despite today's reports. While I recognize there was great news for increased housing starts in 2011 that was reported on July 19th, the headlines barely mention that the national home sales dropped in the month of June. This is from the United US Census Bureau. As I stated before, the good news came out of the increase of home construction, and no one has reported that many of these homes have not yet been sold. The case in evidence comes from the United States Census Bureau, which reported sales of 1.2 million homes in 2005, and year to date this year, 132,000. The housing market is far from recovery, and one spike does not make a trend. In the area of foreclosures, Illinois has been one of the top 10 states leading the nation since 2008. In the period from 2006 through 2011, figures show that Illinois has experienced 424,000 properties in foreclosure in 2010 alone. Illinois had 170,714,000 foreclosures. The value of home prices, despite today's news, also continues to fall. The average price of a new home has gone from $22,900 in 2006 to $166,500 this year. The effect of this can be reflected in the amount of construction spending, which has gone from $14 billion in 2006 to just $4 billion so far this year. The jobs market is not faring any better. And what we may have forgot is that an estimated 1 million people have lost their unemployment benefits this year, leaving us without a true unemployment figure from which to gauge and outline a strategic plan in any business or government. I would also like to remind you that banks continue tightening down on credit, and the banks continue to fail at an alarming rate. In the period from 2005 through 2008, 53 banks failed. However, from 2009 through the present, 353 banks have failed, and we need to look to the future. There are three points I would also like to remind you of. President Barack Obama has halted the foreclosures of many homes by delaying the foreclosures with the hope that the economy will recover soon and that these folks will be able to make payments again. This program cannot continue. Sooner or later, the federal government is going to have to let go, and the foreclosures will again cascade, increasing the inventory of homes and reducing their value some more. President Barack Obama has also halted more foreclosures due to the rubber stamp scandal by banks that were foreclosing on homes that were due to go into foreclosure. In due time, this mess will be cleaned up, and this too will cause a second wave of foreclosures. A sales tax is also scheduled to go into effect to help pay for the National Healthcare Program. Now, some charge of this only applies to homes that sell for $250,000 or more, and on those boats that make $250,000 or more as couples that make $500,000 or more. Now, with the new tightened credit, we're going to need these kinds of people on these kinds of salaries to buy their homes. A mandated product with unnecessary, with a not necessary utility along with these new taxes, with the high property tax increases that we have just experienced, I believe will deter people from buying new homes. In the area of jobs, I estimate that the Illinois rates in the number 12 spot out of 40 states reporting job creation. However, upon closer review, when the clerical positions were removed because they produced nothing of value, Illinois moves down to the number 20 position. The continued number of businesses leaving to the state due to Pacman's tax increases, continued property taxes, home devaluation, increased material costs, together with continuing home foreclosure crisis, I have concluded that this is a bad time to force home builders and contractors to be mandated to add another cost to their construction of a home, in which builders are already having to battle inflated material costs in a market that is already saturated with large inventory of devaluing homes. I believe this is not wise. Your Honor, I also believe that we also need to look at the unintended consequences that come with these good intentions. In the winter of 1985, I experienced a false triggering of the water sprinkling system at CTS Knights in Sandwich, Illinois, which is now closed, in which gallons of water were spewed in the production area. The floors were tiled and the walls were made of painted cinder blocks to minimize airborne particulates and create a clean room environment. I ask you though, imagine that damage had these areas been carpeted and the walls been drywalled. Who then would have to pay for the damages, and who could afford them in this economy? The value of a child's life, well-being, has been put into question. I must then ask, what would the child's life be worth if they were to slip and fall down wet stairs in the dark and get seriously injured, or worse yet, snap their neck and die because the city mandated sprinklers? Just then, just what then would the value of that child's life be worth? Worse yet, just what then would a jury determine the value of that child's life to be worth? I assume that these systems are also going to need some annual inspections in accordance to NFPA standards set up by the Illinois Fire Marshals. And we also need to consider the inconvenience of a pressure vessel inspection to our citizens. Such systems have also been proven to be the source of inspection corruption, which has an awful history throughout the United States and in the state of Illinois. Your Honor, normally at this time, I give three suggestions, but because I had a grandson last week, I didn't finish, so if it's okay, I would just like to email him to you and
Thank you, Your Honor. Now, you have a floor back there, Lieutenant Counsel.
Thank you, and congratulations on the grandson.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other public comment? Okay, I will...oh, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bill McHugh. I was here a couple weeks ago. We started talking about the sprinkler system, and I wanted to make a comment about how I met with, I think I said like 600 people, and that I was very negative, would have been very negative to them about putting a sprinkler system in their homes, and I just want to say that that is not true. That I said nobody had asked me to put one in their home, but if anybody would have, I would have more than loved to put one in. I mean, I would never tell anybody no to anything they wanted to put in the home. So, I'm sorry that you got that somehow, but the one thing I would tell someone today that came to me, and if they did ask me, that they would have to have probably an extra $10,000 or more of money to put down, because again, the houses are not going to praise for it. I'm actually, in either, there's also other features that people are asking to put hardwood upstairs in the whole house, which is very unusual, but the way things are going, the house is not going to praise for it. Praisers do not give credit for a lot of these things. So, there are other things that, as a biller now, we're trying to talk people out of, which, you know, you would have said never made sense years ago. The other thing was on the price of the house that we put a sprinkler system in, you know, you can see statistics from everybody who's got their invoices, but I'd be happy to give anybody the bills that we paid for the house that we put a sprinkler system into the home here in Yorkville. And it would have been $8,700 on a 2,141 square foot ranch, a three-bedroom. And that didn't include me making one penny. And typically, you know, I can't put something in a house that costs that kind of money and not make any money, because if something goes wrong, you have to have money to pay for it. And very easily, something like that, I would think. A biller would need to mark it up anywhere from 5% and higher, like you say, just to cover your costs, because there are many things that go wrong when we're building a home. I saw that staff recommendation is to put sprinkler system in a house that's over 3,500 square feet, which I say I disagree with. Our code committee that we had, you know, came up with nothing of that. We did talk about, I think, a ranch, that if a ranch was over 4,000 square feet, something like that, and a two-story was over 5,000 square feet, was some of the comments that came up on a larger home. But last year, I closed on 14 homes, and the average size was 3,215 square feet, and six of them were over 3,500 square feet. A sprinkler system for a house that size would run about $13,000. And if we had to bore underneath the street to connect to a water main, that would be another $4,000 to $6,000. So, that would have been $19,000 on six houses if we had to bore underneath the street. The staff recommendations are to increase the water line to a house from one inch to an inch and a half, and that's going to run about $900 to $1,200 per house, just adding The bike path, which nobody probably wants to hear about, but, you know, it got voted down twice. It was going to cost, I believe, the actual taxpayers in Yorkville about $13 to $20 a year for total cost. We know the bike trail would help save lives. We also know it'd give great satisfaction to people that live in subdivisions to have their kids ride from one subdivision to another, maybe to the schools, to many different places. But yet, again, like you say, it got voted down twice. And why? I don't think it had anything to do with the bike trails. Everybody wanted the bike trails. It was just how they were going to be paid for. Right now, people, all you're hearing about is government's got to cut spending. And my brother, that's taking care of the two kids that I lost their mother on a bike, you know, he was, he couldn't understand how it could not pass. And I just told him after me reading all the articles in the record, you know, all the people that were against it for different reasons, that, you know, I can see the other side. I was still for it, but, you know, people are hurting right now, and they just don't want to spend money we don't have. And right now, it's just not a good time. And again, that was going to cost people $13 to $20 a year. Sprinkler systems, I'm really off whack with my chicken scratch, but a sprinkler system, as I said, in an average house that I'm building, you know, 3,200 square feet, is going to be in that $10,000 to $12,000 range, and it could be more. There's just a lot of things that go along with it. And last week, Ron Worley was here, and Angelo, and myself, and we told you, between the three of us, we had built 6,300 homes, and there hasn't been a fire up till today in any of them homes. If we would have had to put sprinkler systems in them homes at a low cost of $10,000 a home, that's $63 million that would have been spent that didn't change anything. And yet, the people of Yorkville didn't want to vote, pay $20 because of a bike trail. So, I just don't understand how anybody could vote for the sprinkler system right now when the people of Yorkville didn't want to pay $13 to $20. I just have a hard time understanding that. I guess I pretty much got most of it here. On another note, I did go do, I believe it's an EDC meeting a couple weeks ago, and I brought up about Yorkville looking at trying to lower the building fees. at trying to lower the building fees. As I said two weeks ago, you know, land has dropped anywhere from 80 to 70%. I started building 20, 21 years ago, and land is cheaper today than it was then. Building fees were probably under $3,000 back then. And in some subdivisions here, Blackberry Woods are $21,000. I'm sure they're more. In Rivers Edge, it cost me almost $22,000. You know, I talked about the builders, the subcontractors, everybody's hurting. And the only, the last thing there is to give is the building fees. Everybody has cut their prices, and we got to go back to where the fees were 20 years ago. I think you're starting to see more towns do that. I think the people that react to it first are going to benefit from it. But we just can't get houses to appraise. And I think we just have to look at cutting these fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen comment? Please state your name for the record, sir.
My name is Phil Water with ProBuild in Yorkville. And Mr. Mayor and the Board, I know you've heard lots of concerned citizens and businesses on this topic, and you've no doubt spent a lot of time trying to do the right thing. It's commendable that Yorkville's looking at fire safety, at their ordinance and compliance. Just in talking about that topic, though, the concern for all the citizens in fire safety ordinances is central. And older homes are three and a half times more likely to catch fire and burn than newer homes. And I think as we look at what you decide to do, and I think it's okay to be different in the economy that we have. We've all tried to endure through the times that we have. The housing industry and villages and your tax bases are all subject to what's going on in the way of the revenue stream. And in being different, there are a lot of things in the 2009 International Building Code that you can elect to, including your building and zoning process or not. The Illinois Association of Realtors spent quite a bit of time, and you more than likely have seen this article, about the impact and mandate of mandated fire sprinkling systems. And they argue the other side of the aisle and what it's going to do to the housing industry and the businesses that are in your town. Additionally, are we being good stewards as opposed to choosing mechanical systems that, in most of our experiences, are prone to fail versus electronic systems? And the impact of those things as far as being green and friendly in a mechanical process for a sprinkling system? And then finally, the affordable housing condition that is in our communities, to have something that people can afford. And I don't think it's that the representatives we have that have businesses here in this room are thinking about how they're going to make money off of this. The question is, what are we doing that's the right thing here? That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen comment?
I just wanted to say that the young man did last week, his presentation, I think I was a noble act, and this is nothing against him. So he should be commended for that.
Hi, my name is Tim Greer, and I'm at Tim Greer Builders. I've been here for about 15 years or so. And I think with four homes going, I am now the largest builder in Yorkville. And so the last, last year, we built six homes. This year, I've got four going. Hopefully, we're going to get two more. If these, if this is passed, I don't think any of these would have went through. Each one of these homes that I build brings in about 100 people. Figure I got about 30 subs. Each sub is about three people, plus the miscellaneous. And so that brings about 100 people each home into Yorkville. They all buy gas. They all go to the store. They buy food. They go grocery shopping here. And so I guess I just want you to think of how much that generates into the economy of Yorkville. We've got thousands of lots sitting here, and they need to be filled up. If you continue to raise things, then it will slow us down even further. And I'm hoping to speed up a little bit. I've got a little momentum going here. And so anything that you can do to help this momentum is really, really going to help me. At least don't slow me down. You know, try to help me out and get me, don't make it worse. If you keep it the same, it'll probably keep on percolate and go upward. If you want it to move faster, obviously, what Bill said, the permit prices. I'm working in a subdivision right now where the permit prices were grandfathered in. It's still reasonable. I get outside this subdivision, and the permit prices are probably twice as much. I am the head of a, I'm in a front of a group of people that have kind of pooled some resources, and they are looking to buy a larger chunk of Yorkville. But they want to make sure that not too many things change from where we're at right now. And so I just, Bill's prices are correct. I've done the same numbers as he has. My homes are slightly smaller. Okay, he's 32. I'm probably more around 22. Proportionally, they're the same. He can probably allocate it better than I can in his homes, because they are larger. It's pretty much going to kill my market with that 2,000, 2,200 square foot home. Okay? Because each home that I'm building right now is at cost. All my subs and myself were working for wages right now. And that's how I'm able to kind of fuel it a little bit. But it's better to keep things moving right now versus trying to get a profit. So 25, 30 bucks an hour versus nothing is fantastic. And that's what all the subs are working for. And that's how I'm getting my sales, and I'm able to compete against the foreclosures. And that's fine. I have no problem doing that. But don't make it worse. Don't make me work for 10 bucks an hour to keep it going. If you have any questions, I'm willing to answer any question afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else under citizen comment?
My name is Greg Marker. I work for Richard Marker Associates. We are primarily commercial builders. We don't build homes. I'm actually building a home right now. It's the first home we've built in over three years. So my concern with the sprinkler systems is not the cost, because I'm building my own house. I didn't put one in. The $5,000, $10,000 is not particularly relevant to me. What is relevant is the accumulated costs that keep getting added on to everything. Billy said it was $900 to add, to go to a one and a half inch meter. I actually picked up my meter today for my house. It was a $100 upgrade to go from a 5/8 to a 1. I asked, what does a one and a half cost? It costs $1,100 more to go to a one and a half inch meter. That's not the copper of the house, which is about two, two and a half times the price in the fittings. That's just the meter is $1,100. You've got the sprinklers, obviously. The arc faults are 500, 1,500 to 1,500 dollar range, increasing. Everything is cumulative. And this year, we're on pace, as of when I picked up my permit, to 29 homes in Yorkville. Four years ago, we were over 400. Went to 150, went to 50, went to 42 last year. Now we're at 28. All this stuff adding in here together is just going to shut down the building. And we manage several buildings in Yorkville with tenants. Blackstone Restaurant, Lighthouse Academy, Dentists, Kay Hatch, or whatever, you know, lots of other people. And they all are complaining that we need more people to support their businesses. I mean, they're just, they're hurting. It's not even just necessarily the builders. It's the other businesses need more people to support their businesses to keep the economy going.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jeremy, Bruce County Fire. Thanks for all the builders from coming out. I mean, they're just speaking from their heart. P-2904 in the IRC clearly states that every single family home needs to be fire sprinkled. The city staff came back and said, let's sprinkler everything over 3,500 square feet. And I believe in your package, you have some other options there. Additionally, in your packets, I believe we gave you cities and towns that have adopted a 13D. There's 78, there's 300 cities in Illinois. There's 78 communities that have some sort of 13D on the market. And there's other communities that are starting to move towards that. So I just ask that you consider one of the staff's options in that respect. And as far as any other building codes, I'm here to answer your questions. So nice and short. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Briefly, Sean Michaels with McHugh Builders. Briefly, in the staff's presentation, on page two, it talks about the Yorkville staff conducted a survey in July 2010 of local fire protection systems based on the installation of 2,500 square foot, single-family dwelling, excluding basements. If there is a basement in a house, the basement would have to be sprinkled. So those numbers are misleading, because there would be a significant cost to sprinkler the basement. Just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else's public comment before we move on? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions on consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Pelosi?
Aye.
Ms. Shusky?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Mynes?
Aye.
Monkhausen?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Minutes for approval. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting for June 14, 2011, and the minutes of the regular city council meeting for June 28, 2011, as presented.
So moved.
Diane?
Second.
Any comments, questions on minutes? Thank you, Attorney George.
Go ahead. I don't care. Okay. And on page five of 17, the regular meeting-
Which is that, regular meeting?
Regular meeting, June 28. The first paragraph, the last sentence, it says, Alderman Teeling stated that the city feels comfortable that the 15,000 is enough. I actually said, I questioned whether the city feels comfortable that 15,000 is enough. It was a, it was a question. It wasn't a statement. That's really loud. It was a question, not a statement. I was asking if the city felt comfortable.
Is that it, Diane?
That's it.
George?
Okay. This would be page one, or excuse me, page two of the minutes, regular meeting in the city council.
G. K.
Yep. First paragraph, it says, the contamination is in the sanitary sewer, which is in the right-of-way underneath the driveway. That's not correct. It doesn't even really make sense in context. The contamination was there, but not in the sanitary sewer. It's-
Near.
Ground, in the dirt, you know, it's in the, it also says that they don't believe there is a large plum. That should be plum, P-L-U-M-E. And it says, it is pooled next to the sewer. And I don't think that's correct either. So that needs to be relooked at, because I don't think it's pooled next to the sewer. It's just, once again, it's in that general easement, that right-of-way. Page three of 17, Gilmore spelled incorrectly, G-I-L-M-O-U-R.
G-I-L-M-O-U-R?
M-O-U-R.
M-O-U-R.
Page five, excuse me, page nine of 17, first paragraph, and it's not their T-H-E-I-R decision. Same page down, third paragraph towards the bottom, it says, Alderman Gilson stated the city should have exact cost of all proposed changes, so that the city can know exactly how much of the city's portion of the project can be recovered. Actually, no, that one's okay. That one's fine. Page 11 of 17, says Alderman Gilson wanted to state his position, again, related to this groundwater ordinance, the broken luss system, and it should be lax responsibility, and also believes the city council should err, not err, on the side of caution. And, or maybe it should be, what did you say here? Page 16 of 17, says Alderman Gilson related concern from Residence Minister and Mrs. Peterson noted that there is a drainage issue in their neighborhood. There's more to that, so I'd like to add to that, that the drainage issue is in their neighborhood, that the drainage issue in your neighborhood needs to be looked at again, and water is flowing under and around the pipe instead of through it, is what I stated. And that's on the agenda for today. So I want to make sure that's clear. 12 of 17, Alderman Gilson stated that he's familiar with the process. Just because the dirt can be thrown into the hole doesn't mean it is not contaminated and has spread throughout the property. And it is into, that should be right-of-way, not right-of-way. I think that is all I have.
Colonel? Just a couple of minor changes. On page five of 17, halfway down, right above ordinance approving revisions of the budget, it says Alderman Gilson will say the city should contact EEI as much as possible during the meetings. I think it said question or communicate with, while they're here at the meetings. And then ordinance approving the revision budget, same page, just a little further down, it says Alderman Gilson will entertain the motion to return this matter. I don't want to take the mayor's job from him. I made a motion. I didn't entertain one. So I just want to clarify that.
What was the first link?
We have on there that I stated we should contact EEI during city council meetings. I didn't say we should contact. I said we should question them and ask our questions during the city council meetings when we have them with us. And then, very briefly, on page 12 of 17, we all know who Jeff is, but we shouldn't include his last name or some sort of designation. And there's several areas in the middle of that paragraph where it talks about Jeff said this, or Jeff did that. 20 years from now, if people look at these minutes, they won't know.
Jeff's last name?
Actually, I don't know Jeff's last name. I just call him Jeff.
Treat him as EEI.
See? So we need that in the minutes. So 20 years from now, when I'm looking at him, I know.
You got to pay more if he has his last name, though.
Ms. Ms. Shusky?
On page one, speaking of Jeff, I think he should be put in the also present. He is part of the city staff now, representing the city engineers. And under amendments to the agenda on page one, one, first question of that is Alderman, oh, sorry, Mayor Dolinsky requested two items from the consent agenda. We moved to the end of the meeting, which I believe were the contracts for the chief and the city administrator. Those are not reflected in our minutes, and we did vote on them. We came out of executive session, and we voted on their contracts. And it's not reflected in the minutes. And then the second thing under amendments, amendments to the agenda, I made a motion to table public work item number three and consent item number two to the next city council meeting. Not all of the amendments.
Not yet.
Not all of the amendments. Because two of the amendments were to move items. On the same page, under presentation, you have Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists in the last sentence of that paragraph. They should be capitalized. It's an organization. Under citizens' comments on that page, second line from the bottom, I believe it should say no further remediation letter is given. You have no further. On page two, first paragraph, it's Mr. Beardsley, spelled wrong, B-E-A-R-D-S-L-Y. Second paragraph, under Amy's comments, the second sentence, with the $30,000, I think it should be from I.D.A. The city council should consider this issue in their voting. And then it should say, people keep saying, not staying. There was something else here. There was something else here. George got that one. On page 12, there's several spots, you have right-of-way, it's right-of-way. There's, it's on that page one, two, three, four, about five times. And then, under, where it says Jeff from EEI, in the middle of the page, they talk about that they will have to expose the contamination, I believe it was dispose of it, dispose of it? And that's in two spots, one, two, three, four, five lines down in that paragraph, and then one, two, three, four, five, six lines up. Actually, one, two, three, four lines up. And then, one, two, three, four, five, six lines up from the bottom of that paragraph, it says needs to go to a special waste, I think it should be landfill. Page 13, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, it says Alderman Milshewski stated width of the sidewalks, and the last word should be grant. And then the next, two paragraphs down from there, I said that it didn't, that the new sidewalks didn't match the character of the neighborhood, as the neighborhood is in an older section of town. And then I noted that from Van Eman to Fox, there are four-year-old sidewalks that are the standard width. It doesn't make sense how you have it. Then I had a question, and I'm not sure on this, something Alderman Gilson said, on page 15, under the ASLID grant, you stated according to the memo, you use the term, I don't know if it's forced labor or forced labor.
Forced, yeah.
Is it with a D? Okay, thank you. I was unsure on that one. So never mind of that. And then, under additional business, page 16. On the signage issue, I talked about the sign on Van Eman and Houston, and then you went to garbage collection, but then the next paragraph ties in back to the signage issue, that city administrator said he would check into the intersection. I think you have that in the wrong paragraph. And then, lastly, on page 17, under executive session, on number three, you have Mayor Golinski entertain the motion, then you have item one, two, three, but under three, you have that he entertain the motion again. And then also on that page, the vote on the contracts is missing.
George?
There's two more, unfortunately, I forgot to mention. On page six of 17, that's the one, the paragraph starts with there was discussion on the privately raised funding, collect should be collected. On page six of 17, the paragraph that states there was discussion on a privately raised funding, collect should be collected. And back to the paragraph for under minutes of the regular city council meeting, page one, actually, we were talking about the paragraph that starts with Dave Richmond, and we've already made some corrections there about no further remediation, but actually, that whole sentence doesn't make sense. It says next year when IDOT widens Route 47, they're going to tear up the contamination that is in the right-of-way. And it's, they're not going to tear up the contamination, they're going to expose it, you know, or not even, I don't even think they said expose it, they just said tear up the right-of-way. But you may want to double-check that as well.
Anyone else on minutes? Rose?
This is on the regular minutes, page two. The first paragraph, and I'm going to count from the bottom, the fifth line up, business back end that pays sales tax and property taxes and is now, rather than not, an eyesore to the community. On page 15 of 17, and the last paragraph, third sentence up, they have a candle and curtain, and it should be set on fire, not kept on fire. And that's all I have.
Page six, under Route 47, expansion, one, two, three, third paragraph down, at the very bottom, we only have to pay an addition 30 percent, it should be additional 30 percent. Page nine, second paragraph, second and last word, I think we have a, should be T-O-O, two, not just T-O. Page 12. Second paragraph, third line being instructions to, should read, being an instructionist to our economic development. Okay. And then, page 14. The line just before economic development community report, should be downtown is phase one, wrong, spelling of the word.
Anyone else? Are you sure? What do you want to do with these minutes? Just approve them as amended, or do I see these again, or?
Prove them as amended.
Okay.
Do we need to modify the motion?
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended after Jackie speaks.
So, I talked to Kathy, I guess we have to clarify too, if these should be corrected on this copy and put on the website, or noted in the rec.
My suggestion is getting the margins here, you know, some asterisk amended amended, and then, so put these on, and all of these should be reflected in the minutes of tonight's meeting. And that is my understanding of it. There is, when these get posted, they should be asterisk that there is amendments. And then, my understanding of education is taking minutes would be, then you would add it to the next minute, so when you see it's amended, you go to the, you go to the next set of minutes to see what the amendment is. So that you're quoted as amended.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is, I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance approving the second amendment to the amended annexation of planning unit development agreement, will keep subdivision raging waves, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Just for the record, I'd like to say I agree with Mark Johnson. Normally, I would not like to see a vote in a public hearing on the same day. In fact, staff even mentioned it when we met with the gentleman from Raging Waves. But, in fact, I think I agree with everything Mark said tonight. But this was kind of a special circumstance, and, you know, the same day, vote is on me. I said we should do it, because every election, one of the first things I did was email Scott from Raging Waves. I said, you know, I thought you were treated unfairly by the city, you know, I'd like to see the city make you whole as soon as possible. You know, let's get together and talk about your annexation agreement. And unfortunately, they were getting ready to open up for the season, and luckily, they've had a busy season, so we didn't get together for a couple of weeks, till a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, I kind of saw it as something that's not confrontational, a simple amendment to the agreement, we're just pretty much making them whole again, putting things back the way that they were. All right, so I thought the city did a bait and switch on them, I wanted to see this get done as soon as possible. So I don't think it would be a problem voting on the same day as the public hearing. And another thing to factor in is in our meeting, Scott said that you possibly use that as a marketing campaign for the last month of the season, you know, price reduction for the last month, even get some more business here in Yorkville. So with that, I'll open it up. Comments, questions?
Will you or have you directed staff to put it in policy that we no longer in the future vote on any issue till after it's been, you know, through its readings and all that good stuff?
I did not so direct staff, but we can talk about it at admin, why don't we talk about it at admin?
Yeah, I think if you can, put it on committee that we put that in policy so that we don't vote on the same day as a public hearing.
And technically, I think it's a good idea, but there are exceptions. I mean, we should have some sort of an out in there for an exception like this.
That's fine.
Any comments, questions on annexation agreement itself? Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I support this, I think it's a good move to correct a situation where we're overtaxing a local business, and I think that's a good message that we can be sending out to other businesses, that we realize this is not what we want to be doing, and this obviously will take care of the situation, so I support it.
Previously, there were a couple of us that objected to the business tax that we put on perfection in Raging Waves and also the bowling alley, and I would like to know if we can readjust that as well.
Yeah, we could have done it then. I mean, you can bring it up to committee, or-
Okay, I'd like to suggest we bring it up at administration.
Yeah, I agree. I wasn't on the council at the time, and I wasn't happy when the 3 percent sales tax passed. I agree with Mayor, it was a complete bait and switch on these businesses. And if we want to send the perception that we're a business-friendly community, we don't invite people into our city with a certain tax rate, and then lo and behold, by the way, here's 3 percent more, now that you've put out these millions of dollars in infrastructure, and we know you're not leaving. I do have a problem with voting for the issue on the same night as public hearing, that goes against how I think public meetings should be run, and what the purpose of a public hearing is to obtain feedback from the residents. I'm willing to make the exception tonight, and I am going to vote in favor of this ordinance. However, I do need to see some sort of policy, and I'm on admin, so obviously, we'll be working on that, because I don't, not want to make it a habit that we vote on policies that require public meetings on the same night. So I want to thank Raging Waves for being patient, and hopefully, this will make them whole, and they can enjoy the rest of the summer.
I just want to say that I am happy that this has come forward, that we've come to an agreement with Raging Waves. As has been said, I am not in favor of voting on a public hearing the same night that we have the hearing. I want it to be known that this will not be the typical action, I hope that we can come up with a policy that will allow us to have these on separate nights. This is an exception, it's righting a wrong that was created, and tonight will be an exception to that, and I hope that through admin, we can get a policy in place that prevents us from doing this.
I just, I have a question. I mean, I don't have a problem with this, but just something that Mr. Johnson said, I'd just like to have an answer to. And maybe you didn't say this, but just correct me if I'm wrong, that we're rescinding the this tax on this business? Is that what you said?
I don't think I said it that quite like that. It is, because it looks like it's 2.75, not 3 percent. I didn't really understand, I addressed it with a few old ones.
Yeah, I-
I wasn't sure, but it pretty much takes that 3 percent away, is what I understand this public hearing was about.
I guess I thought that when this came up with the amusement tax, that we had done this with Raging Waves.
We talked about it, we're going to do it, and we never did it. It never got done. So it was on top of what was already in the annexation agreement as an admission-
Because that was the part of the whole thing, was this was supposed to be done then?
It was never done.
Okay. One more thing, I guess I just wanted to say that because I don't want other businesses in Yorkville to think, well, we rescinded it for them individually, can you rescind it for us? Because I don't think that's what this is doing. This is just evening it up with the other businesses that have the amusement tax.
Right.
That's what this is doing, is evening it up. It's so it's not an additional tax onto what the admission tax plus an amusement tax. And I was under the impression that that's what we were going to be doing, I thought it was being done, I thought it was done.
Yeah, and to clarify that more, the previous mayor stated she was doing that, and it never did get done. So, and this is the right thing to do, 100 percent. I mean, we do need to even the playing field here, and lessen the burden that we've created for Raging Waves. So I'm in favor of this as well.
Roll call, please.
Pelosima?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Milshewski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is an informational item, River Road Bridge pedestrian accommodations. I am going to have to get some sort of consensus vote on this. When we first started talking about River Road Bridge, my K. Hatcher's office, the representatives from IDOT there said that because the bridge is being funded in part with federal money, we had to put pedestrian accommodations on the bridge. Originally, the thought was if we had to do pedestrian accommodations, you just make the bridge wider, but now we're moving forward with the bridge while the dam is still in place, so it's not feasible to make the bridge wider. So they would have to look at a separate crossing upstream of the dam to accommodate pedestrians. But since then, we have learned that you can proceed with the project without pedestrian crossing, okay, without putting in pedestrian accommodations, and still use the federal funding. So staff's recommendation is not to put any sort of pedestrian crossing on the bridge, so that's what we're looking for tonight as guidance.
So you're basically asking if we spend $200,000 on a tiny little pedestrian bridge, or if we don't spend $200,000 on a tiny little pedestrian bridge?
It would be our own bridge to nowhere.
Yes. Not connected to anything on either side. My recommendation would be that we scrapped the pedestrian bridge.
I see you nodding, George.
I do have a couple questions. So in the executive summary, are we going to correct that to say that it's a separate pedestrian bridge is required, so that everybody knows it's not required? You're telling me that it is not required because of the presence of the Blackberry Creek Dam in relation to River Road Bridge? Just so that everybody's clear, this isn't a requirement that we ignored?
It says that in this memo, that it is required?
Well, it says it's required.
The way I interpreted that was it's required if we want a pedestrian way because we can't do it on the road.
Right.
So if we want a right-of-way for the pedestrians, the bridge is required, but if we don't want the right-of-way for the pedestrians, obviously, the bridge is not required.
Okay, just, I mean, I don't know if you want to make that clear or not, because, I mean, if you read the discussion on whether a pedestrian bridge should be built adjacent to the River Road Bridge project, it says a separate pedestrian bridge is required because of the presence of Blackberry Dam in relation to River Road Bridge. You know what I mean? The way it's stated-
It could be read two differently.
Yeah, you bet. But I do have a question, to make sure that before I vote, I mean, it's a no-brainer, but I do have one question. I brought this up in the YBSD, and I really never got an answer on it in admin, is what they asked was, are we going to move forward knowing that the dam is going to be in place, and then go forward doing this River Road Bridge, and then afterwards have to lift part of that up to repair or replace the dam? Because in YBSD, there was sort of a discussion like, it's kind of silly, and they seem to make, think that that was something we should be considering. Have we considered that? Is that going to happen later? What's the status of that?
The design of the new bridge is such that it's going to be tied into the existing abutments in a certain way, but it will not be required to be removed in any way, shape, or form when the dam is removed.
Okay, but we're not going to tear any of this River Road Bridge construction up if they have to repair or do anything to the dam?
Correct, that's not the intention right now. Things can always change four years from now, depending on the engineering that has to be done at that time. But at this point, they are not forecasting that they have to do that.
Okay, and at this point, so just so I have, for clarity seconds, what's on the record, we have no intentions of replacing that dam, correct?
No, the dam right now is scheduled for removal in-
No, the dam right now is scheduled for removal in 2015 or 2016 by the Army Corps of Engineers. So the intent right now, and this is an Army Corps of Engineers project, is to remove the dam and make it a rock spillway. There's different levels of coordination, engineering, construction, and different levels of government that are required in order to get that project done. It has to actually be a partnership between the IDNR and the Army Corps. So, and us. So there is a lot of things that still have to be done, but that dam is still scheduled for removal through the Army Corps, just without any funding.
And that, in that removal, when that happens, will not damage this bridge whatsoever?
None of the work? Correct.
Okay.
I just had a question about, there was an article in the Beacon about the funding and that there's, we can find this money, and I was just wondering, what did that mean? You know what article I'm talking about in the Beacon?
No.
I think I can summarize that a little bit. The Beacon article referenced, I believe it was the Chairman of the Highway Committee, County Member Bob Davidson, who said Yorkville thinks that they can find the money. That related to a request that Mayor Gilinski and I attended one of their Highway Committee meetings. You know, as of a few weeks ago, we didn't think that we were going to be able to afford this project but for a loan from the county. And since then, there have been some things that have changed financially. Now, the audit is a little bit more finalized with hopefully some good news for you here in the next couple of months. That kind of wood. And just some other things that have changed with the local economy and budgeting. So we do hope to be able to cover our share of River Road Bridge from the budget, but that's a decision you have to make in the future. So that was the request. I think the call was put in by the mayor to the county board member to just say, you know, we don't necessarily need to finalize a county loan at this time, because our budget is still a little bit flux with this issue.
Yeah, I guess I was just surprised to see it in the Beacon, because I didn't know, you know, anything about that.
I didn't see it in the Beacon.
Yeah. There's just a question.
Anyone else? Looks like we're all pretty much in agreement. No pedestrian bridge? Okay. Eric, you have enough direction on that?
I do. Thank you.
Next is EDC report?
Excuse me. Did you need a vote on that? Because it said it required-
I'm looking for direction consensus.
Okay.
If you want a pedestrian bridge, speak up now.
I'm good.
Go ahead, Marty.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make motion to approve an ordinance adopting by reference certain building mechanical plumbing, energy conservation, fire, fuel, gas, property maintenance, residential, and existing building codes regulating and governing the construction, conditions, and maintenance of all property, buildings and structures in the city, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Jay, please second. No, Marty made the motion. Jay, please second.
Just give a little background on this, because it's something that the committee and Christie have been working on for a long time, and have put a lot of work in it. There's a lot of parts to this. So basically, it comes down, and we have, again, discussed it, EDC committee. There wasn't really any major consensus either way, so we thought it rang to the whole council. It's going to need to be discussed anyway. But basically, we got a couple of choices. You're going to approve it as it's written, or we can approve it as amended. So if there's a couple of pieces in there that everybody agrees we don't like, we can still approve the whole, the majority of the motion and get that rolling. So again, if the pipe issue or the sprinkler issue, we can prove they're amended. So anybody have any questions? Christie, or just start the discussion?
Go ahead, Rose.
Regarding the National Electric Code, the staff continues to recommend approval of the 2008 National Electric Code as originally proposed. And I think there was a lot of discussion on that throughout the committee. And I totally agree with the staff that that is the one that we should approve. And I think that maybe Christie could elaborate on that a little bit, if you don't mind, about how it's going to affect the other codes in your department as well.
Excuse me, that's a separate motion, second.
Right, that all in the first one, too?
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
We're going to discuss the next motion, and we'll be going to O5, the O8 electric.
Okay. Hold your thoughts.
Questions, comments, concerns in the first motion?
I do. Well, the first, the first motion we're talking about then is, obviously, so I'm on the same page. Is the motion approving the mechanical plumbing, energy conservation, fire, fuel, gas, property maintenance, all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay, I have some questions and some issues with that. Number one, just make sure I'm in the right, International Code 2009, and this is a question for Eric. On the berry of the hydrants, are we five and a half or we six?
Both.
Okay. Should we put both in there, do you think?
Yeah, I would.
And that's, that is subsection 305.6.1, point one, which is, talks about five and a half foot berry. I think six-foot berry needs to be included in there as well, so that there's clarity for that. On subsection 603.1, shall be changed to as follows. This is the part that I've beaten a dead horse about before, and I'm going to say it again because I firmly believe it. To mandate, and I believe this is for residential homes, correct? Yeah, to mandate inch and a quarter water service line is a way, well, number one, inch and a quarter is overkill, and staff discussed that, and they're right, but inch and a half is even more overkill. And to mandate inch and a quarter or inch and a half for the standard home being built today is not only overkill on what the water consumption is for that residence, but it's also an added cost burden to the developers and to the city. And I would suggest that we keep the size of that water service pipe for residential homes, excluding, you know, fire sprinkler systems. Homes with fire sprinkler systems to be one inch and not any larger.
Can we just do this one issue at a time? So if we get agreement on that, then we could add the amendment for at least one issue? Does that make sense to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Kathy, are you writing these amendments down?
Yes, I am.
So if we amend this, 15 amendments.
I just wanted to add clarification on the first comment about the water supply. The depth is a minimum. It's not less than five.
Okay, okay.
So do you want to vote on that, or how do you want to go about this, Marty, in terms of each?
It's good consensus. I mean, if we have consensus, if everybody thinks one inch is five, we can make that as amendment number one. So again, we're not killing this whole ordinance just based on, you know, four part amendment. So I guess go around, if everybody's cool with the one inch.
One inch.
Well, the way to do this would be a motion to amend that portion of the code, eliminating the one and a half inch and instead one inch. Take a vote on it, and that amendment will be in effect.
Right.
I'd like to make motion to amend the building code update recommendation to stick with the one inch pipe.
Second. Roll call on that?
Yes.
Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just have a clarification? You're saying though, on houses, it would have to be larger if somebody wanted a sprinkler system?
Correct. I would include in that for all residential houses, but, you know, but excluding fire sprinkler system. If they, if they choose to have a fire sprinkler system, certainly you would want the larger line. But I, I mean, I just don't think we should mandate one inch across the board.
It's a minimum, correct?
Yes, there is an option for a recommendation, staff. And it is to require the size that we already have, unless warranted by the plumbing code for us to increase the access and condition.
And you and I, we went back and forth about this, Christie, is, you know, that plumbing code is, will tell you that, that it's warranted to have one inch for a lot of homes that will never use, over one inch for a lot of homes that will never use that. And a lot of communities, matter of fact, I'd say the majority of communities are completely ignoring that because they know it's overkill. And they're, they're mandating, they're ordinating around that, because the one inch is, like I've said before, and I can go through flows with you because I know them, but one inch pipe is plenty sufficient for the standard residential home.
It is, it is. But we are adopting and we are enforcing the plumbing code actively. That's why I think that's not a question.
Well, I mean, if we're taking opinions, that was a deal breaker for me, the one and a half inch. I think that was excessive, adding cost to the homes, as the builder said. There's no reason for it, and I do not want to tie it into the building, to the plumbing code. I just want it to be one inch. That is the city's requirement. If somebody comes in and they want all the bells and whistles and eight faucets in their bathroom and a sprinkler system, and, you know, and it's required by the engineer who's designing the house and says, well, you got too many faucets, you got too many fixtures, we're not going to bar anybody from getting an inch and a half, inch and a quarter, whatever they want to do. But we should just make it a one inch minimum, no tie into the plumbing code. That's, that's really what I would support. I would, I would object to it. Anything different than that?
That's the key, Carlo. It can't be tied in that plumbing code, because if it's tied in that plumbing code, whether we like it or not, you're going to require inch and a half, inch and a quarter.
Well, then you're letting somebody down in Springfield writing this code legislate what our city has to do, and I don't-
Unless we just did, right? We ended up just keeping it at one inch.
That's the motion on the floor that has not yet been voted on. It's been clarified that the motion is simply one inch without any condition.
Correct. Roll call, vote, please.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Munt?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Pelosi?
Aye.
Sun Calzer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Motion passes.
George, we can just do the sprinkler. We have three options on sprinkler. I'd probably do the other big thing.
Sure.
The staff recommends doing sprinklers on 3,500 square foot homes and above immediately. Also with two other options to adopt it 3,500 square feet above in 2015, or there was a third option. But we need, that's probably the biggest issue to discuss, if we want fire sprinklers or no, or do we want them in 2015, or do we want them at all?
Go ahead, Carol.
Well, my, my point on this one is very simple. I will not vote for this code if it requires fire sprinklers, period. I, I can appreciate fire sprinklers. They're, there's an option. People can order them. People can get them if they want them. But I'm not going to put another burden on people who are trying to move into Yorkville and add eight, five, 10, $20,000, whatever number you want to believe to the, to the cost of the house. So if, if there's any requirement for a sprinkler in the code, I will be voting no for the entire code.
Would you please make a motion then to amend the international residential code to eliminate any sprinkler requirement?
I will make a motion to eliminate any reference to a sprinkler requirement in the international code.
On residential.
Just residential.
Residential code. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, comments or questions on that motion? Roll call, please.
Pelosi?
Aye.
Sun Calzer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Munt?
Aye.
Spears?
Nay.
Okay, what's next?
Now we have two big ones. Once I hit any bells, does any, any other amendments you'd like to recommend, or?
Just a few comments. Staff did a nice job reviewing this. Yeah, there's a lot of suggestions there for clarity and a lot of other suggestions made that we should follow through with. Do you get that clarity? The... Well, we took that out, so that's not an issue anymore.
We have a slight break in the action. Just to clarify that last vote, it was on single-family residential.
Not necessarily.
One inch, not town.
Correct. Which is-
Yeah, my intent of my, my motion was for single-family residential. I understand there's different requirements for businesses, multi-unit, absolutely.
And duplexes and townhomes and kind of things.
I'm okay with that part of it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns about the original motion to update those codes?
We've made a motion, I believe, on the main motion. So now it would be a vote on the main motion, which Marty Muntz made, or Lynn Muntz made, as amended with the two amendments.
Now, does this amendment, or does this motion take in all of the staff comments and recommendations that were in our packet?
Except the two amendments, if we will.
Except the two amendments, Anna Davis.
Okay. Roll call.
Sun Calzer?
Aye.
Milshuski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Spears?
I would have to vote nay since we are changing, I don't want to be liable for taking something out that is in the original code, so I would vote nay.
Pelosi?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
All right, next, we got a choice here on the motion for electric code, O5, O8. So I guess I'm going to make motion for one. We can discuss and vote. If that fails, we can do the other one. All right, so I'm going to, I don't think most people are leaning to the O5, so I'm going to read that first. I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting by reference the 2005 edition of the National Electric Code published by the National Fire Protection Agency and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second. Comments, questions on that motion?
Please, Christie, clarification, the O5, the O8, the main thing is the arcing? Is there any other big?
There are some additional changes that we consider. There's improvement say in 2008, there's an option. Want to adopt the 2008 EDC, you can adopt it without the arc faulting. We're not exactly for it. Importantly, we know that 2008 EDC is complementary to 2009 international code, which is adopted. So if they use the 2005, it goes to 2005. It doesn't count, and it's a bit of a catch.
I support that. Can I ask my original question to Christie? How, if we adopt the 2005, how is that going to affect adopting the one that we just adopted in your entire department as far as inspections and the requirements?
There will be added plan reviews. There are some checks and balances that may not match up in the 2005 when it comes to residential, specifically arcing is residential. And there may be some glitches in some areas that staff hasn't even had an opportunity to see or know that complications could happen until they're out in the field, inspectors, plan reviewers. But specifically about arc faulting, arc faulting is required now in homes. It's just not required in certain areas. There's a map, a floor plan, rather, in your packet that shows where arc fault is already required. The difference between arc fault and a GFI, which most people are familiar with, is arc fault protects structures from catching fires, where GFIs protect people from getting shocked. GFIs are usually located or have to be located near an area where there's water. So you see in kitchens and bathrooms. Arc faulting is in your common areas where people are living every day, your bedrooms, your living rooms, your family rooms. Those are the rooms that will have additional voltage that could trigger some arcing in the wires that can cause fires. So with that in mind, the NEC, the 2008 version, requires arc faulting in family rooms, dining rooms, living rooms, parlors, in those areas. And if you see the map, it just shows where arc fault is required and where it's not. So basically, you will have protection in your home in any outlet. Again, arc fault, it has an exemption, though. It does not include your connections for your, your fire alarm systems or for your smoke detectors that are wired. So they can be exempt from arc faulting. So you don't have to worry about, you know, if it, you know, triggers this detector, that you won't have protection with your fire alarm system or your smoke alarm system.
So it would be definitely a public safety issue, and I think, I think it would be beneficial to adopt the- And I think, um, I think it would be beneficial to adopt the 2008. Also, it would be, um, saving time and money for our department here trying to compare both of them and the inspections. And I, I just want to say that this was thrown out to committee, I believe our last meeting or second to the last meeting. Um, we were, everybody was going ahead with the 2008. And then this was the biggest complaint, the arc fault, and it was going to be costly. Not that I want to put more cost on the builders or developments, but yet I think it's beneficial that we keep both of them together.
I agree with Rose on this one. This one, I believe, makes sense. I also believe that a thousand dollars, um, spread out of the price of a home for the protection you're going to get from these things is well worth it. So I'm going to vote in favor of this.
We're voting on O five.
Oh, O five, okay. Yeah, no, I want, I want the arc fault protection. So no to that, yep.
A concern at, um, EDC where we discussed this two months ago, a former building inspector, Mr. Zabel, said we, the city doesn't have the equipment to properly check for this?
Uh, no, that's not correct. Um, we do have equipment and the equipment that's online, um, for this is called, uh, square D or double, uh, square D.
Double D.
Um, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. That is a glitch.
Okay, I remember now.
That he did find. You still can inspect. Uh, square D itself has caught up with this technology, so they have newer versions of this testing equipment that we could purchase and have that. Or we can outsource that inspection to, uh, a company or, or consultant firm that has the right equipment to do the testing.
Carlo?
Well, I have two comments. First of all, or just one comment, I, I guess I don't have a clear picture of cost. I mean, I, I got the picture of cost on the pipe and the sprinkler and all that. So if we require this, and maybe the builders can answer this better, I don't know, and somebody comes in and says, to meet the city code, we got to put in these arc fault plugs in the house, how much of an increase in the overall price of the home am I looking at on an average twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house?
We were told about a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars for a home.
Okay.
So we're looking at additional cost for installation of just the outlets, or the system, the arc fault, first of all. But then the city would also be obligated to either contract out or purchase new equipment in order to do the testing.
Not necessarily.
If we wanted to do it effectively, we have currently a system that is glitchy.
Uh, it's an equipment. You can also hand test it.
Okay.
You can test it.
Well, we do have that.
You can trip it and go in, in the basement and make sure that...
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, if I could, Mayor. Motion to approve the 2008 edition of the National Electrical Code without the arc fault.
Um, what we have on this, on the floor right now is a motion to approve the 2005. So we need to vote that up or down and then...
If we vote that down, then we can bring it down. We can back down this motion.
So...
So now it sounds like most people want to go O eight, so...
Let's vote on O five.
Vote on O five.
Okay, and we're good at that. So roll call vote on the O five.
Teeling?
Nay.
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 Gilson?
Nay.
Cut?
Nay.
Munt?
Nay.
Spears?
Nay.
Colosseum?
Nay.
Funkhauser?
Nay.
Milshewski?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting by reference to 2008 edition of the National Electrical Code published by the National Fire Protection Agency and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second. Comments, questions, concerns?
Make a motion to...
Amend.
Amen without the arc fault.
To adopt the 2008 without the arc fault.
But you want to keep the arc fault, the current standard that we have, the 2002 standard?
Yes.
For the arc fault, okay.
Uh, just for clarification, if you, if you, the way you stated the motion, we would take out arc faulting in bedrooms, which is already now required.
No, that's what she just stated, to maintain the 2002 standard, but not to include the 2008 arc fault standard.
Right.
Clear?
As mud. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we're just rolling on the amendment right now, and then we come back to the main motion, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
And that's to take the arc faults, I'll go back to 2002.
So this is on the amendment to take the arc faults out and apply the 2002 standard.
Correct. Any comments or questions on the amended motion?
Well, I'd just like to say I have the same theory behind this as I do the sprinklers. I'm glad it's an option. I know the builders will put it in if you request it. But once again, I, I don't think the municipality should force you to put these in. My house was built in nineteen sixty-two, and I still have two-pronged outlets in there. And, uh, my house hasn't blown up, so I, I'm not going to put another additional cost on the builders and the, and the residents who want to move to Yorkville. So I would encourage you to pass this amendment.
Roll call, please.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Strictly on the amendment and not on the main. Go.
So he, Alderman Muntz made a motion and then Alderman Funkhauser made it.
He amended.
Alderman Muntz made the motion. Who seconded it?
Well, I made it. Larry Tom seconded it.
Seconded it. It was on the table, and then Alderman Funkhauser made a motion to amend, and it was seconded by...
Gilson.
Gilson.
So you're with Gilson, and that was to take out the...
That was to take out the arc fault requirement, but the plot, and instead, as stated in the 2008 code, but instead to apply the 2002 code standard. So this is a vote, then, just on the amendment?
Yes. Roll call, please.
Gilson?
Nay.
Cut?
Nay.
Munt?
Aye.
Spears?
Nay.
Colosseum?
Aye.
Funkhauser?
Aye.
Milshewski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Motion. Then we're back to the original motion. That's amended. Any more comments, questions on the original motion? Roll call, please.
Cut?
Aye.
Munt?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseum?
Aye.
Funkhauser?
Aye.
Milshewski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
That's a free to you, Your Honor.
Well done. Moving on, the Public Safety Committee report. Will you, Colosseum?
Yeah, we have a proposed ordinance that's up for first reading today. Uh, we wanted to give the residents of Grand Reserve an opportunity to, uh, find out about it, hear about it before we actually voted upon it. Uh, it's for some parking restrictions up by the colonies. Uh, there's some areas up there that they're having difficulties. Uh, uh, we think it's a public safety issue with the movement of emergency vehicles, things like that, to restrict parking to only one side of the road up in the colonies area of Grand Reserve. Um, the information's available online for the residents up there at Grand Reserve. This is the first reading of the ordinance. Uh, and obviously, this was brought up to, by, uh, Fort Four, uh, Ward Four Alderman, Diane Teeling brought it to our attention, um, from some concerns. I don't know if you have any comments?
I do, actually. And when this, when this was brought to my attention, and I have to apologize for this, they wanted other streets, no parking. They said East Millbrook, but they were talking about the streets around there, but those are not city streets. And at the time, I thought those were the ones that, you know, I knew Millbrook, I talked to you about. I don't think that this is one of the streets that was a problem. It was more like the, the, the other streets that were, um, uh, that are private streets that are owned by the development.
The, the inlets that come off, right.
Yeah.
We're talking about the...
I know. And this is my fault. I, I should have, you know, I guess I, I wish I had been at that meeting when the, did the residents come in?
No, nobody came in, unfortunately.
Yeah, because they called me and they wanted this, they wanted this, um, the streets, uh, one side of the street parking, and they live on Millbrook. So, you know, I guess I kind of assumed that that was the street that they were talking about. And it was actually those inlet streets.
Motion to send this back to committee, or?
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll send this back to committee. I'll move to send this back to Public Safety for review and, uh, we'll see if it comes out.
I'm sorry. That was my fault. When they called me, they live on Millbrook Circle, so I, you know, and...
Have they been aware, made aware that we have no authority over the...
Yeah, they understand that. They, they got the, you know, they understand that because after this happened, they're like, well, that's, you know, we were talking about these other streets. And I'm like, oh, well, you live on Millbrook, so...
Well, that's why we gave them an opportunity to hear before we vote on it, so, um, so I would like a motion to move this back to it.
Okay, I'm sorry. That was my...
Further discussion or...
My bad.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Kristin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No Admin Committee report tonight. Park four, there's one I heard. And I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution approving the revised park rental use policy and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. So moved?
Second.
Comments or questions on this?
First. I second.
Chris. Carol, let's see. Any, um, comments on this revised park rental policy? Questions? Pretty straightforward.
That was the only change, right? That one little...
Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Munt?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseum?
Aye.
Funkhauser?
Aye.
Milshewski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, a couple items under Plan Commission, a couple things came out of Plan Commission. I will entertain a motion to support the, the Jernigans.
Jernigans.
Okay. Request for special use approvals to operate a bed and breakfast on the subject property within the county.
This one?
So moved.
Second. All right, uh, this was heard at Plan Commission earlier this month, and the recommendation was to support, uh, the approval of the bed and breakfast for special use in the county. And Dan Prager's here. Uh, he's representing the Jernigans if you have any questions about the operation.
Any comments or questions on this? I need a roll call.
Yes.
I just have one. Have the surrounding neighbors been notified?
They have, actually. Um, we've got a poll at your Plan Commission County Wednesday night.
Okay.
And our special use hearing officer, which takes place at County Zoning Board this next Monday. But what we did, um, the Jernigans already closed, they want the home, and before we closed, I had voted on all the neighbors just to make sure, you know, they were handled, that they didn't get any objection at the county level or anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Be that.
Anyone else?
I'm, I'm just curious, just to get some inform, some more information. Dan, can you tell us a little bit about it?
Sure. You know, wire never be used. Excuse me, but I'll be brief. Um, the Jernigans are an interesting couple. I would say they're in their early fifties. He's been a corporate type all his life. They're from Allen, and, um, so they've moved to this area. They live in Downers now. They bought the old Gaylord mansion, which is the stone pillar one on the south side of Route thirty-four. There's a city hecklesburg, um, call it a banker sign right in front of it. And what they're going to do is totally restore the inside. They're not going to change the outside of the historic house at all. And they're actually buying a little cottage next door that's on the river. They're going to live in the cottage, so if we were to rent it or any of us, a bed and breakfast room there, we'd have our privacy at night. They'll be next door, but not intruding on them. Um, they'd like to also encourage, besides the bed and breakfast, maybe small type gatherings if there's five or six people that are quilters or scrapbookers or, you know, maybe a really, really small office that wants to do a little retreat in the river. It's totally wooded. It's about two and a half acres, so you literally have to drive in to see the house. I think Christie's at least driven in out there. Just a beautiful sight, and it's very private, so it should be a good amenity for the community. And I know they've already made contact with Lynn at EDC to get some publicity. Thanks for asking, George.
Thanks, Dan.
It's good seeing you all.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call, please.
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseum?
Aye.
Funkhauser?
Aye.
Milshewski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Munt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is a code amendment for government zoning applications. I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance, approve an amendment to the regulations regarding the processing of the applications in New Yorkville zoning ordinance and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. So moved?
Second.
Kristin, James. Comments, questions, George?
Is there a way to add into this, um, some sort of a check before we dismiss those to find out whether or not there's any monies owed to the city? Outside, above and beyond what we're looking at here?
We already have a policy in place that addresses anybody that has, um, deficient funds or defaults or owes the city any money that we can't advance on any application that they have. It's all been approved.
I was just curious on the legalities, and Kathy, you might be able to answer this?
Um, what Christie says, we don't get here while they still owe money, but we definitely, definitely should be doing that. Yeah, we should be, the policy should be done. But we're holding monies that we should refuse to release the monies until they reconcile any outstanding debt.
Is that, would that be not a fair thing to put into this policy itself in writing? Because I think it should be.
I've got a part of policy letters again, yes. So you're...
I don't know where you'd add it, Kathy. You're the legal guru, but I think it needs to be clarified so that there's a firm policy in place that that's being done, not skirted around.
Can we restate the question? I think I'm a bit confused as to what we're actually asking for.
I am asking that if there's any monies owed to the city at all from each individual developer or petitioner, that we do not release these funds until we've done a complete check on all monies owed. And if there's monies owed, that we don't release these funds.
The amendment, may I suggest, just on paragraph D, page two, it would be the balance of any fund deposited with city not needed to pay cost or fees or any other outstanding debts owed to the city.
I think that was...
That's perfect. Thank you.
I guess I'd just like to say that if there was a deposit sitting here that we were gonna send back, then if they owed us money, we would just take it out of the deposit before we sent it back.
Well, now it's in...
Okay.
Now it's in writing, so nobody can script around policy, because we have other deposit policies that we haven't followed in the past, so...
Do we need a motion to amend, or...
Why don't you just do a motion as rewritten? I think...
Okay. Yes. Any other comments, questions on that? So roll call, vote on the original motion as amended with the amendment?
Spears?
Aye.
Colosseum?
Aye.
Funkhauser?
Aye.
Milshewski?
Aye.
Teeling?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
All right, we have the Northern Board of Appeals, City Council report, city clerk's report. City treasurer's report. I'll take that as a no. Community and liaison reports. Any liaison reports this week? All right. Staff reports?
No report.
Lynn, do you have anything for us? Additional business?
Just a quick comment. While this talk about the sprinkler system, I know we voted against it. I think it's important we work with the fire department. I'm a big advocate of smoke alarms. And I know I was talking about, there are state laws in effect that govern the requirement to have smoke alarms in residential. And I think it's important we remind our residents that they need to make sure that everyone that they have them according to law and that they maintain them properly. And we heard it at the last meeting. I mean, to me, they're not as good as a sprinkler system, but they're the next best alternative. And it's really important that, maybe we can put something in our newsletter, but we need to get the word out and just remind residents. I mean, it's too late when something happens.
Thank you. Have we settled on a place for businesses to park during 47 construction, other than the old jail? And I guess what I'm really asking is, are we leaning towards any specific properties as resolutions over the old jail property? I'm asking that on record so that I understand where we're at, because I still think I do.
Well, the selection of land in which to acquire has been discussed at Public Works Committee, City Council, and then, you know, you are also allowed to discuss land acquisition in a closed session to a certain extent. So the answer is that there has not been a frontrunner for the location of the site. So, other than the old jail, which obviously we own and there's currently an engineering contract on. So there are several sites outstanding that the staff is still studying that are in various phases of development or development entitlement or contract purchase. And so as that fluctuates, our frontrunners will fluctuate.
Hey, I was just asking to make sure, Bart, that we're still seriously looking at an alternative.
Oh, yes.
Blasphemy here that we've decided on the old jail, because I think that's a large, a huge mistake on our part to do that, so...
And that direction would have to come from City Council, hasn't shown back yet in the open session.
I just wanted to say that I talked to Bart this week about one of our local businesses, and I just was, I'll just say what was going on is, it's Hoppers, and they want to be at Hometown Days. And I'm just hoping that everything can be worked out. I don't know where you're at with that, and I was just wondering if you could, you know, give me an update. Do you know anything about that? I know they're gonna be at Park Board tomorrow, that it's on the agenda for the Park Board.
Sure. The staff is discussing different features and attraction for Hometown Days, and so that's about where it stands.
Okay. You don't really know anything else, then?
They're negotiating with her to set a booth fee, whether admission can be charged based on our contract with our carnival, so there are a lot of pieces still in play. So I know that they are in contact with her.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, and Jeremy, I'd just like to add on to what Larry said. We appreciate everything you've done educating us on the sprinkler systems and the demonstration, all the information that you sent to the City Council. And I, we appreciate it, and I hope it didn't go the way you would hope, but we appreciate all the information. Thank you. That's it for regular meeting. Good meeting it was. I will entertain a motion to adjourn it to executive session for litigation, collective negotiating matters. Is that it?
That's it.